Call the meeting door at 6:00 PM. Starts with a question, please.
My question is, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no regime, just for all.
Before we move on to item four, if there's anyone that would like to speak during the public comment, please, we have forms up on the table there. If you have not turned one in, please go ahead and fill that out and turn it in to the board secretary right up here. He won't be interrupting, he can welcome. That comes shortly, so if you want to do that, do that. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented by the Board of Representatives.
Moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Drew, to adopt the agenda for the March 17, 2025 regular meeting as presented in the discussion. All favors, you can say yes or no. Aye, and the opposed?
100% agenda, you're approving the next one. You are also approving general fund rolls amount up to $5,254.15. AP payroll tax amount of $13,029.90. And total of $249,085.13. With tax number 70301, for the single payment call to AC. It's for an amount of $338.30. For a total of $829,715.43. Weighted, no additional bill under person now. Additional signs Jason Strad, RC, Coach. I'm looking for the items 100% as presented.
Is moved by Member Boxey, supported by Member Thompson, to approve the item 100% agenda as presented. Any discussion? All favors, you can say yes or no. Aye, and the opposed? For recognition celebration, anybody have anything for this evening?
I would like to ask you, please be sure that the last and final being true are turning down the Memphis supporters and claiming to take what's on their needs to the level of government and all of that. And then we see that we continue to do it.
Reports, where do you have the reports? Any questions on any of the reports we will provide? Does the students have a report tonight?
Yes.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
So, we had a, so since the last meeting, we've met twice. And we've all, those are actually many different things. So, one thing that I focused on was really, I'm trying to work with these topics in the office that is to create a link on the school website. That you can kind of send in like information for the morning announcements for like a shout out kind of thing. So like scores and anything that you can do good and kind of show you out. Because we've kind of been lacking that approach remarks and reading that. We kind of want to make sure like students are getting heard.
Yeah, alongside working on meditation and shout outs for kind of the teams, the players, so much more deserving of that, and working on sports platforms. I just think that's a really big thing for me to acknowledge the players and teams that are doing that. I don't think we're enough of that as of recently. Unfortunately, we're able to do that for winter sports. And we know that suddenly, if it comes back, that's probably what we're working on at the moment.
We're looking at getting more people back to the SAT group. And we, today, we presented to all the juniors. And we let them know what was happening, when it was happening. And we're trying to get them back. And tomorrow's the news, I'm excited to see how many people will be back.
Excellent. Any questions for the new president? Hi, Scotty. Are there any questions about the other reports? So now is the time to save for a public comment. I'll ask that, Mrs. McHugh will call your name. You have three minutes. I will let you know when your three minutes are up. In order to keep everybody at the same time. So, we would ask, if it does say on the form, we would ask you not to use names and keep decorum in the room. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. McHugh to call the first speaker.
Audrey O'Connor. Sorry, I'm trying to find some examples. Sorry. Okay, I'm going to do my own picture. I just don't want to. Thank you, Audrey O'Connor, President of Riley Township at 11570. Good evening and thank you for your time. I'm here tonight to voice my unwavering support for the elementary principal and my deep concern over the poor leadership and lack of due process in how this situation is taking over. Let's talk facts. I've got publicly available performance data from Memphis Elementary covering principal, elementary principal signed her from 2016-17 through 2020-24. The numbers speak for themselves. Significant improvement in improvement in core academics, student achievement, and school performance. The 100% growth index tells us students are making maximum measurable progress, a testament to strong leadership, effective instruction, and meaningful student support. Does this mean everyone loves her? Of course not. But if she were truly fostering a toxic culture at some point, would these results be possible? Absolutely not. In my 16 years as a parent in this district, no administrator and their son has shown her level of dedication, results, and love for the school. Yet tonight, we're considering non-renewables, clearly not based on performance or facts. I look forward to the superintendent's explanation of this consideration. Regardless, we are here today because of poor handling of this situation, which reflects directly on the superintendent and the board. On February 25th, this replaced our administrative meeting, but instead of transparency, we got science. A vague letter from the board president, not the superintendent, left the community in the dark. My March 10th email to the district went unanswered until another community update on March 3rd that offered zero reassurance about the city. Meanwhile, this display out in media fueled by illegally obtained and unverified text messages admitted by the community on social media and the news. Yet rather than ensuring a fair and thorough review, the district has chosen the easier path to remove a respected educator rather than stand up to public pressure. This is not leadership. This is failure of due process and abdication of responsibility. If a high performing principal can be removed over baseless illegally obtained accusations, what message does that send to every educator in this district and potential future educators? If you cannot prove beyond doubt that these messages were hers and that her presence genuinely harms the school, there's only one just decision, reinstate her. But if you choose to remove them, be prepared for the consequences. Because if the elementary principal is forced out, you are proving that Memphis values mediocrity over excellence and you will prove what I have been telling her for years, that she's too good for this district. And if you can't recognize true leadership when it's right in front of you, perhaps it's this board and this superintendent should be readelegated. Thank you.
Bishop Gifford.
Good evening. My name is Bishop Gifford. I'm here two months in these schools to make a better beginning for the district. And here in this state, I matter that's very near my heart. There's too many of us in that pride running around. When I should, I should be. For years at Fort Wayne, I've worked and my students and teachers have asked for her to say that those who are in the community have always been changed. And now it's an exceptional hope. And my goal is to stand in the middle of this engagement with every, every, every parent every day. My goal in our school is to stand, but my commitment is never to learn. Every student they have learned is all mine. Throughout my career, I work hard, facilitate relationships, focus on mutual respect that I believe in the students in my care and other families as well. I've advocated repeatedly for my students, I cheer them for their successes, encourage them when they already give up, and help them account for their faults and weaknesses. Not every decision I make will please everyone. While I always strive to do its best, I am human. Mistakes happen, misunderstandings occur, but never once have any of my actions sent anything less than proof of my care, concern, and love for our students and my desire to help them succeed. I know that the same sentiment resides in the hearts of every staff member of Memphis. This is the nature of working as an industry. Since the best thing happened, and we work so much of our hearts into something that we do. Currently, I feel free. I can very fearful that something that I do or say in the normal course of doing my job could set the wrong person off, leading to life-altering repercussions. I worry that simply standing here tonight, it may quite meet the target of current social media posts that jeopardize my career. As a widow and sole mom and provider for my children, it occurs over and over again. But I've always taught my students and my own children to be brave, to stand up for what is right and speak their truth. And I will not allow you to silence me now. Technology and social media are powerful tools, ones that can be used to uplift and support that all can restore. I will not say any bellying of time tonight to speak on current social media posts or pictures of a dramatically affected hour and entire student community, but I will ask this. What safeguards exist to protect the hard work of educators who dedicate themselves to our students every day? In an era where social media has such a powerful hold the impact of deciding as a whole what is stopping some of them from saying creatures things about me simply because they can't accept me for doing my job? No one is true, not me, not any of my colleagues, not any of you for that matter, are immune from the threats of such posts. And unfortunately, in the court of public opinion, often matter is stating a true or false. A bell cannot be undone and rures our hardest ones from spreading the water. I love my job, I love this district, I love our community. For more than anything, I love the students and staff. But I have a privilege to work alongside every day. And no mistake, I know it's a privilege. It is a privilege. But I hate being afraid when I come to work and we told it's something maybe something change. Thank you.
Jim Lino.
Jim Lino, 35175 Pratt Road. I hear there's a question now, you want to speak. Why would somebody find a phone in the woods? Take copies of it and then burn it. Why would they turn that phone? There's some fishing, Jack, there's. I don't understand. And then, when you guys walk away, that's the worst. We'll never. Second part, I've been here for a month before they had an investigation. Investigation, investigative. What is investigative? There was four people, everybody in town knows who was on that. None of them had questions. Nobody asked to see the phone. I had the phone in my pocket for a whole month. Attorney told me, the attorney said, hey, they asked to see your phone, show me the phone. They don't ask for it, don't want to see it. They never asked for it. Nobody asked to see the phone, nobody asked to talk to me. Where is the investigation? There was a few more points I had. I had it in my pocket. Downtown, bring the best, hey, someone, they might ask me. So my attorney told me to take it to 36 Software Auto. Okay. I don't even know what that is. I'm a least computer guy. So I drop it off, he calls me up and goes, hey, all the other messages been deleted? There's messages on it, his exact words, or some idiots text his whole name in his phone and then deleted all his messages? Somebody tried to buy that to EPIs. It's a warning, not a mandate, because they're going to get every location where that phone was opened up. So I mean, it's a big failure all around. I can't believe anybody, I can't, you shouldn't win this lottery. Your superficial, sadly, you have nothing but fake pictures. I mean, if you look at things, you got white out and you got words on it when you had the phone. Why didn't you take the phone? Here, I got the phone, look at it. It would have solved all this. School should have said, hey, there's nothing here. But no, I like that. All I got.
David Hankins.
My name is Dave Hankins, and I'm the husband of exemplary administrator and partner of two Memphis Community School students. I'm here today because, as you all know, my wife currently does not have a voice, but I do. For years, my wife has been the voice for students, staff, and administration, advocating for those who need its support and ensuring they were heard. Today, I'm doing the same for them. I don't need to list every contribution my wife has made to this school. Her deep rooted dedication speaks for itself. There's nothing she wouldn't have done to protect the school, its students, and this community. Her job has never been easy. Leadership comes with challenges, and not everyone will always agree with her decisions. That is understandable. But people have the right to disagree even dislike her. What they do not have the right to do is attack her, violate her privacy, and endanger our family. Recent events have crossed every line of decency. A family member's phone was illegally accessed, its contents manipulated and weaponized, and my wife has given no consideration nor the two Memphis Community School students who live in our home. The district had ample opportunity to adjust the situation, yet nothing was done to put out the fire. This has spiraled out of control. Individuals have been netted against my wife, have continued their relentless attack, not just on her, but on our entire family. These people have openly stated that they will also now be targeting my job as well. Unfortunately, as a trusted medical professional, I have supported with my employer that any baseless accusation will be swiftly dismissed. I only wish my wife had been given the same level of support. Because these bullies have faced no resistance, they have escalated their offense. They have created fake profiles, publicly shared my wife's personal information, distributed our home address online, and even boasted about people driving past our house, putting both our family and your students at risk. My wife sits at home heartbroken despite the overwhelming support from the community. As a family, we have witnessed the countless hours, sleepless nights, and sacrifices she had made for this district. We have seen her miss family moments to be there for her staff and students. We have seen her shield her team from under treatment, stand up for struggling students, and pour her heart into making this school a better place. And yet, when she needed protection, when it really mattered, the district did nothing. By remaining silent, you have sent a dangerous message that bullying, harassment, and personal attacks on administrators are acceptable. You have sent a president that could one day be turned against any staff member of this district. I hope none of you ever have to experience what our family has endured, seeing your children, your students scared and entirred because of unchecked cruelty. We cannot undo the past, but we can decide what happens now. Will you take a stand and declare that this level of harassment and bullying will no longer be tolerated? Will you denounce the use of illegally obtained altered information as a weapon against administrator? Will you affirm that the safety of your students, your responsibility is a priority that cannot be compromised? Your actions tonight will speak louder than any words. I urge you to make the right choice.
James Fields.
James Fields, 80263 Belvedere Road, Mr. I brought a pile of documentation with me regarding my experience in Memphis. First, I want to thank the teachers that are here. They do a wonderful job, and your people on the front of lines do well. This is not just about a cellphone and a story written on WDID. This is about a pattern of behaviors of intimidation, privacy invasion, retaliation against children. And when children speak, it's our job as parents, guardians, and the community to take their voices and bring them forward to the administration. If the administration cannot listen, and the administration does not take action, and instead invades the privacy and uses that to intimidate parents and children, then it's the board's responsibility to take action and investigate that. This is not about just a cellphone and some racy texts. This is about a pattern of behavior. This is top-down in any business, in any organization. Behavior and tone starts at the top and works its way down. Whether it's the Board of Education, through the superintendent, through your principals. That's where it all is, that's where it starts, and that's where it's communicated. We personally, my family, when we came here last year, the community, a pocket that we already knew, our entire story, which is alone a violation of FERBA. That has been filed with the Office of Civil Rights. I have taken action, we have filed two state complaints, which we found Memphis in violation of state complaints. I would urge the community and the school board to investigate and understand the totality of what is being discussed here. Emotions can run high, but that does not, under any means, allow any type of bullying, any type of intimidation. An echo chamber of this opinion is an echo chamber of this opinion. They are echo chambers. Somewhere in there are the facts, and the facts will speak. The school data, since everybody wants to hang on data, I will point out to you that your enrollment is down 13.6% in five years. So you can talk about your scores, but your enrollment's down 13.6. Across the state, you were dealing with 20% loss in average of students, the funding that affects everything. So the students that you're going out and try to poach from neighboring districts, some may have left for whatever reason. You're all fighting for onesie twosies where you're dealing with personal opinion. Again, it comes down to the facts. You have a group of parents. I have had testimony, I have done exit interviews with former employees and parents that have left this district. There is a problem, there is a concern. Those voices need to be heard and acknowledged. No matter what your personal feelings are, or what your stake is in the game, everybody's voice should be heard.
Beth Hughes.
My name is Beth Hughes, I reside at 79887 Maymont Street. I feel it is safe to assume everyone is here tonight to support all of our children. For someone is to be assured that their children are continuing to be protected, the children who have been fortunate have not had the same experiences and lovers. The children of some of the parents you are hearing come tonight. For the rest of us, it is for our children to start feeling protected. These are the children I'm here to speak up for. I've been addressing these concerns for the past five months, addressing the dishonest behavior from administration that affected way too many students in our district, and the dishonesty continues. Since I addressed my complaint, I feel the focus is on protecting elementary school principal and make up parents who are liars, thieves, and my son a criminal. I am not just an angry parent not holding my son accountable as many have claimed. I'm a victim of corrupt behavior by our elementary principal. This dishonesty being spread throughout our community begins with her. She knows she is spreading false information, encouraging her supporters to do the same, putting them at risk by not being truthful, as some hold respectable positions in our district. I know for many this is all about the phone and the messages. Those messages were not meant for the public, they were only a small part of the complaint. The main part of the complaint was the negative responses of my families in our district, and I was trying to show the pattern of behavior over the years. I included letters from families who have left our district and some who have stayed and continue to suffer. I'm aware it took two weeks for the fact that I submitted to be considered only to learn that the focus has only been the text messages, mostly focusing on how the phone was obtained. The elementary principal put the idea in the people's heads that this phone was stolen by the servant family, which is completely false, and it was considered a fact. Her supporters took that and ran with it to gain support for her. We have elected the members of this board with the trust and confidence to assist this district as a whole, not to be selective. I am losing confidence in some of you, and I have lost trust with our administration. I so badly want to trust again, not only for me, but for everyone who is unaffected by her. No one in this room has a way to determine our children's fate based on personal bias. Our children should feel safe and respected and heard by those entrusted with their education and wellbeing. They should be taken in all the positive influences who are privileged to play a role in and to help them mold, help mold them grow with their respectful, honest adults. Instead, we are in a district of professional boundaries or built on nepotism where our elementary school principal continues to demonstrate a lack of self-control and professionalism. Her dishonesty does not just affect those of who has spoken out, it damages the very integrity of our school district. This district needs leadership that prioritizes professionalism, fairness, and most importantly, the well-being of our students over personal interests. Change is needed. It is time for this board to take real action to restore trust and ensure that this district truly serves all students. I urge you to make the difficult but necessary decisions to rebuild the integrity and create a safe, supportive environment for all of our children deserving. Thank you.
Michelle Hill.
Hi, I'm Michelle Hill, 2194 Coe Road. Well, I have released a bunch of links for community members and families. In my opinion, administration and this board don't really address concerns entirely in the anti-hysteria manner, which puts a lot of people at risk, a lot of honestly war between the community. I want to be sure that each of you are here and look to represent what our district stands for, engage education power. Three keys that we have dedicated a lot of time to over the past several years, that this district has witnessed through leadership, our school improving, that earned respect and rehomer initially lately. Guest numbers are down, however, when they're leaving at elementary school. They're leaving when they get to the other building for sports, for economics, or because of lack of representation consistently over there. There's been a lot of online chatter about families who are, no, sorry, that were, any supporters are minions or a big tool, what to say, or are regrets. I'm not a minion, nor do I have special friendship established or any special treatment. Myself and others standing here today are regular parents that step up on your fundraising coach. Sure, we end up with a collaborative relationship, because that's what happens. Because she has collaborated and supported these programs. She invests alongside of those who invest in this district. 24 years I have been in this district and witnessed countless turnover. Administrator, China, comes and goes as a stepping stone, who does not engage your families or staff, who does not implement necessary change, who I see in this board standing behind when they shouldn't have. Choosing to not renew would be a testament to what you value in our district educators and students. It will show that you do not support the actual facts, data, and improvements we evolved in this under leadership. Audrey O'Connor provided that today for the entirety of her being the principal. It will prove that you do not sit here in an effort to perpetuate your person. That you're okay not only choosing an amazing principal, but also students, coaches, and teachers will no longer have trust in this board and district. The data and the facts are right there, numbers do not lie. Now it's time for you guys to decide if we're going to truly serve for a small district where victims have.
Alexis McCready.
Alexis McCready, 21903 West 127. When speaking about what has come about last month, I wanted to say something from a student standpoint myself, because I feel it's important for you. One of my experiences, staff faculty and the Memphis community, myself are 12 plus persons. Never have I ever felt more scared to be Memphis student than now. The way this has been handled and let news over social media blows my mind and has made myself and others feel extremely uncomfortable and unsafe. This situation has been handled very poorly. As a former Memphis elementary student and someone who has continued to stuck to work with the elementary as I moved to high school, I've never felt treated, I've never felt treatment was given unfairly or favorably for myself or any other students. The students have never once been informed or reassured everything throughout, reassured throughout this, even when there was a news reporter at the school waiting for the students to be released. And by a meaning that is extremely uncomfortable and should have 100% managed share with us prior to exiting, especially in elementary and especially in its social media chaos. We've only had to experience what was shared through social media with this harassment.
Samantha J.
Samantha J, Riley Township. I wanted to speak about the elementary expansion. Hello, you're related, express my concern with the elementary expansion. In November, we received an email about all of the benefits our students would get from the elementary expansion, my name and my fellow parents and children and professors, graders were over the moon about this expansion. When I asked about it, my emails to all of you, I was confronted with barriers all of a sudden. I believe this is already in effect from the current chaos that has been caused in our community. Students are already being negatively impacted by this. And previously, this was basically a goal based on the developer email. I presented solutions to the barriers in that email. Again, to the superintendent, the board, Mary T. to accept my offers of solutions or figure out how can that expansion go. Students do not let outside forces or non-stable persons delay your decisions today.
Megan Majorick, Brennan.
Megan Majorick Brennan.
My name is Megan Majorick, and I reside in County. Three of my children were harmed in this district for over nine years. I substitute taught here before that I was in M E T C trustee for years. I go back to the drawing point from three efforts series of crimes led the principal to make a reveal to me when my daughter became a target, carefully crafted, fully approved. Over the years, the principal has done a number of generous favors to me, which attention to fault my loyalty. In the end, I'll admit that, but it did, I felt like I had it over consequently. But when it comes to your case, that kind of now, this is when people do bad things and make mistakes, bad people, they will be doing other things, and this is usually not one of these things. I regret that we've heard the hard name, that no child has ever complained about her, kids love her. I would reflect the challenge that is with a little child apology, that no child asks what's wrong with the adult who's hurting them. They ask what's wrong with who, me and the child, they turn on it, it becomes a seed of the weak. And I'm here today for the movement we aim. I'm excruciatingly probed and kind of doing this, I've analyzed and everybody imaginable, I've asked myself if my integrity would be questioned, just as I've watched other people who can't really be questioned. I consider if I'm strong enough to handle any criticism that comes my way, and none of my kids are on such a need to, they're old enough now to have asked if they would be affected. I don't know the answer to any of that, I just know that I felt called to speak, because while I don't have loyalty to her, I have loyalty to you guys, I do have loyalty to people like this. When it comes to children, you just can't. So even if my burning voice shakes in this room, and I pray that you will receive this message, and that you get some clarity with me and make progress.
Shannon Servik.
Hi, my name is Shannon Servik, and I reside in Rayland Township. I have three daughters in Memphis Community Schools, and I haven't spoken out loud about this until today, but I need to. I was approached back in November to write a letter regarding my daughter and our family's negative experience with our principal, our elementary principal. I realize at this time so many families share these similar negative experiences. I gladly accept it, because every day for nearly two years, I have prayed for a change in administration here at Memphis. There are great stories heard about her, because the bad ones, well, people are too scared to share them. Families fear retaliation against her, or our children, or our children and our families. This is what my complaint was to our superintendent nearly two years ago. It was about how our principal misused her power relentlessly about my daughter. What our family went through because of her was ungodly and heartbreaking. My daughter was only, my daughter was only ten years old, and I had to worry about if she was going to be okay, and she had to worry about going to school every day and seeing her principal. Do any of you know how that must feel, at ten years old, scared to go to school? Our principal called students-
I've stopped you, Tom. If there is an outburst, you will be asked to leave the room. Thank you.
Our principal has called students' families pushing them to dislike my daughter, a child per se at the time, how unprofessional and heartless. I stand here today to tell all of you, the parents fighting for a new administration and change are doing so for all of our children, former students and new, so no child will ever cry themselves to sleep at night over their principal. And as for the phone, the false rumor created by our principal is yet another form of retaliation against my family. It is the perfect example as to why nobody wants to come forward and complain about our principal. As for the elementary principal, I am sorry for her. She had to lie to protect herself. There's countless documents, there's proof, a police report, and most of all, a community member sitting right next to me who is telling you that she's found possession of this cell phone. I've spent more hours than I can count volunteering at Memphis Community Schools and have opened my heart to any and everyone that I have come across. My family is saddened at what this has come to. So many families have been destroyed because of the principal. Their names were defamed, and there is no coming back from that. Students who have undergone countless hours of therapy, and amazing teachers who have been pushed out. If she was here today, I would tell her she is a coward and she is a bully, and my family will no longer be sentenced by her.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to remind you, everyone gets three minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone's three minutes. That will be a disruption, and you will be asked to leave the room. Next name, please.
Amy Walls.
Amy Walls, research and teacher in elementary school for twenty-six years. First and foremost, I'd like to leave by asking you to recognize that these messages of the frivolous issue for the newscast which reported them are unverified with their office to be in question. With that being said, even if your proof of authenticity could be determined, I write this respectfully implore each of you to take a moment to reflect on the risks of your own, personal conversations dating back in the good news. Consider with full transparency whether every correspondence and contact solely to our close family member or friend would accurately reflect your true character. I venture to say that we all have made comments at one point in our letter, or in this case, distant past, which by no means accurately reflect who we are or what we see on the field. Do exceptional, upstanding people with huge hearts and great minds make momentary acts as injunctions with their word dedication? I venture to say that everyone who's human should fully answer that. Should such comments, which do not accurately reflect who we are, destroy the career and life of someone who tirelessly committed their time and effort with great success in nineteen Memphis Elementary, an exceptional place for all students to prosper and thrive, absolutely not. Our administrators' efforts and accomplishments have in fact been recognized and celebrated by this board and our community on the march. Very recently, as a matter of fact, I've been on the Data Michigan checklist. As a very proud employee of this district for twenty-six years, I can say without hesitation that I have never witnessed an interaction involving this administrator with a student, parent, or community member which painted her as anything but racially and culturally tolerant and honest. As a veteran teacher of countless students for whom learning and behavior has been challenging in some way, I have personally witnessed this administrator consistently supporting and guiding and nurturing all students to reach their academic and legal purposes. Does that mean along the way that some feathers won't be ruffled and people won't have different opinions? Of course not. That's par for the course for changing roles to a person. We, as a school and community, cannot allow the voices of a few seemingly disgruntled people who essentially destroy the life and career of the very person who has done so much to build Memphis Elementary to the extent that it's grown, prospered, and thrived under her watch. Look at the twenty twenty-four Unstuck scores of our Memphis Elementary students. Those numbers don't lie and can't be manipulated, nor do they have any chance. Those successes are a reflection of a great leader with strong visions and convictions who lead by example and motivate the staff and students alike by helping us all recognize and achieve our potential. Trust me when I say that every single one of us is better for her and much for our own.
Kevin Watkins.
Yes, I'm going to start talking about the Western Front chapter. I'll do two questions about this before. I feel for you, because this issue goes on both sides. I'm here to talk to you about the process. And all here know that, one thing, from what verse did, first, I want to mention that you guys have a resolution in regards to you believe in anti-extermination, anti-racism, and creating a safe space for all students, every student in the district. And for people to know in this room, there are seven districts in St. Durr County, only three districts have stepped up in that type of resolution. Forty-nine high schools, forty-nine school districts, Maryville School District, and many school districts. The other four are silent, pray to make that commitment. And with that commitment, shows that you believe in due process. And I want everyone to know that due process was taken here. The N A C C P was reached out to in regards to the situation here, and we let people know that, as we knew that what was happening, that what you did was part of the process. Actually, couldn't personally repay, and reached out to an offsite organization entity to do the investigation, that showed they're focused, and then also you've made commitment with full transparency. Well, that's what is expected, and we appreciate you following that path, and hope you can keep in that path, that path. So I just want to make sure, very sure, that people that are here are stating that due process wasn't carried out here, and as far as the N A C C P, we know and understand civil rights, and we understand the due process, we have our committee to make a repress, and that's foremost what we look for, that due process carried out, everyone, civil rights are protected. So I agree with you for doing that, and please continue on, and make sure one of your reports back that is transparent, everybody knows what is there, so you can make that, hopefully. Five to six, thank you.
Marissa Williams.
Hello, my name is Marissa Williams, and I'm a former Memphis Community School student. I would say the behavior and ideology that we've seen through the text messages that were shared by the elementary school principal, that's not new here, but that is something that doesn't change. I, as a former student here at Memphis, I experienced racism on all levels, myself and my family, and it's not something that you want to experience, especially if you are a child. So there does need to be change here, and it starts with this school walk towards by making that change, and some arts students, and some arts teachers, that you cannot tolerate that even more. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Williams.
Good afternoon to the good citizens of Memphis Community School District and Board. Wonderful citizens. My name is Mary Williams. I'm a nineteen seventy-eight graduate, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a former student who was discriminated on every level by this school. And some of the stories I can just start telling you, some of the stories my mother never knew how bad it was as a child growing up here. I had to remove my kids from this school because of the racism. I wanted to give Marissa, who's an attorney, a chance to make it. She wouldn't have done that at this school system. And the best education for her did come from this school, but I had to remove her so she could have opportunities. I had to remove the foster children from this school this year, because I didn't want the foster children to be discriminated against. I had to remove them. And for the same reasons why I had to remove my students, my children, the students, the children that I care for, are the same, some of the same practices I've brought on here. Some of the people in this school board were the same people I came to and said, this is happening, this is happening, you didn't believe me. You're going to believe these people? It's happening. But now some of the people have got the courage to speak up and say, no more. No more. And I hope they don't tolerate it. And if you guys continue to let this behavior go on, I'll tell you definitely to do, because there's some ways that they can make this school district lose everything I taught it the right way. I didn't know the right way when I tried it before, but I know what it is now. But what I'm concerned about is, yes, the principal did do some other things, and she did say some other, some other things through texts, and you can't cover up, texts don't lie, black and white don't hide, if somebody does a good investigation, they'll go find out, they ain't gonna lie. But those same practices are here. And she might be a good person, which I believe she is a good person, but she lacks character. And that's one of the things that Memphis schools say that they believe in, is good character. So you, I think that you must hold her accountable. But one of the things I'm more concerned about is that you guys were the ones that fed her. You guys were the ones that brought her on as a principal. So if you guys, I would have to say that you need to be held accountable also. There are problems here, that you didn't do your homework and see these text messages before, they were sitting there all that time. You guys have a right, you guys, the board, the board can do, can make a change. She has that character, now the question is, what is your character?
Everybody in here.
Good afternoon. Hold on, Mr. Harrison. I'm Mr. Harrison, Dr. Wills Township. I'm a graduate of a neighboring school, my wife's a graduate of the opposite direction neighboring school, and we settled in the middle, we were very split on whether or not we were going to send our children to Memphis. Our child was, our oldest was originally enrolled in another district due to some things with I E P, and I was being resident here. We defended Memphis, got my daughter situated, she went through the speech she needed to go through, we were treated with nothing but respect. The teachers, the staff, the principal, the admin have been fantastic, reached, made the decision to enroll our children into the district. They're there, they're flourishing. My wife is an educator, she couldn't be here tonight. She has nothing but great things to say about the school and the staff, that's, again, why our children are enrolled there. We're going to have problems no matter how you look at it, how you come up for sitting here and invited room for no reason. We're all members of a small community. Ms. Hankins has done nothing but show love, support, and encouragement to every student every time I interact with her, which being a high-grade worker is quite odd. I attend everything I can at the school for my children around in the community. We're going based off of a phone that's four years old, it's got white out in the photos. I can change the name in anyone's phone to represent anybody I want it to represent, it never once shows an actual telephone number. I understand there's going to be an investigation. I'd like, you know, a report to come out, have full transparency, but one thing I'd like to address is all of this was all through social media, long before any of the parents of the community were notified. If kids subbed their toe prior, we were getting phones, phone calls, emails, text messages, informing us there was an incident, whether it was your child or not. Then this comes about, we get nothing. I had to call the admin building, and an hour later I got a phone call back letting me know that a letter was going out, and fifteen minutes later I got the letter. That was a complete art failure by admin and by the school. It's unacceptable, it needed to be acknowledged, when it was discussed, and the parents know the truth. That's, that's all.
Okay, correspondence. Just have true school on those. Any discussion on true school on those? All right, moving on to action items, let's get a motion on the floor for eight, please.
I move to accept with gratitude the generous offer as presented from the Memphis U Baseball and Softball Organization. Twenty-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars and sixty cents to be split equally for the Memphis Community Schools, varsity baseball, and varsity softball programs as presented.
It's moved by Member Bach, supported by Member Rosenau, to accept with gratitude the generous offer as presented from the Memphis U Baseball and Softball Organization. Twenty-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars and sixty cents to be split equally for the Memphis Community Schools, varsity baseball, and varsity softball programs as presented. Any discussion? Do you remain in all favor, signify by saying aye? Aye, vote. Motion carried. Your motion on B, please. Motion on B, please.
I move to adopt non-graduation resolutions presented.
It's moved by member Thompson, supported by member McHugh, to adopt the bond gratification resolution as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor signified by saying aye? Aye, and opposed? Motion carried. Motion for C, please.
I move to approve the quote from Zimmer Roofing for roof project as presented.
It's moved by member Rosenau, supported by member Vossie, to approve the quote from Zimmer Roofing for the roof project as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor signified by saying aye? Aye, and opposed? Motion carried. Motion for D.
I move to approve the moving six grade students to the elementary building for the twenty-five, twenty-six school areas presented.
It's moved by member Thompson, supported by member Vossie, to approve moving six grade students to the elementary building for the twenty-five, twenty-six school area as presented. Discussion?
I think I have some of the difficulty with moving classrooms, moving things from one side to the other. In past years, we used high school students that might want to one week out when the school year feels over, whatever, to help with doing that. And I understand it's a huge movement of presentation we were given, to what benefit it was for our students, we think that we have to just forego the roadblocks and figure out.
Agreed. I think we probably get a lot of people to help with.
Yeah, I just think it needs speaking.
Any other discussion?
What are the students who serve hours for long-term classes or for early graduation?
I don't see why not. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor signified by saying aye? Aye, and opposed? Motion carried.
I move to release the session at eight. Six fifty-one PM in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, Act two sixty-seven and nineteen seventy-six, for the purpose of attorney-client privilege.
This will be a roll call, though. Before anybody leaves, I believe the board will adjourn, the board will adjourn to a room, so you guys don't all stand in the hallway together, so the board will adjourn to another room, so you don't need to leave. Motion, uh, I had a motion by member Thompson, supported by member Vossie, to go into closed session at six fifty-one PM in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, Act two sixty-seven and nineteen seventy-six, for the purpose of attorney-lying privilege. Take a roll call, please. Yeah?
Yes. Vossie? Yes.
Hearing none, closed session, board.
I move to go back into open session if we have a question.
It's moved by member Thompson, supported by member Vossie, to reconvene the regular session at eight PM. All favor signified by saying aye? Aye, and opposed? We're back in the open session. Last, let's get this started on an attorney to read the results in person.
So, as you are aware, Memphis has requested that they had consideration to a non-renewal at the open session, so that will happen now. I will begin by reading the basis for the non-renewal recommendation, which was, by my understanding, with her attorney last week, and which the board received, oh, actually, it's, sorry, those documents there. The recommendation is based on findings following the investigative meeting with Ms. Hankins and her legal counsel. So I will read it. It is a memo that is addressed from the superintendent to the board, but I might have some realistic of efficiency here. As you are aware, the board has recently presented with an extensive document from a parent related to Memphis Elementary Principal Susan Hankins. The bulk of the document is called Concerns from the Parents Who Provided Document, some additional concerns on parents, community members about various custody failures. Normally those concerns would be reviewed and may be investigated. Some of the concerns raised in the document were previously investigated. The document, however, also included via a series of text messages spanning twenty-six pages, some of which appeared to be authored by Ms. Hankins. Ms. Hankins was provided an opportunity to provide a response to the text messages in March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, due process, needing a legal counsel, with her own legal counsel in attendance. Ms. Hankins also provided a written response to the parent acted through her legal counsel. It's my understanding that the text messages were obtained from a phone that was previously owned by Ms. Hankins' brother, which was reportedly stolen. The following statements in the text messages were reportedly written by Ms. Hankins in a message to an individual in reference to a career Davis speaker. Quote, "Who, looking through his Facebook pics, it seems his job is pecking black guys." Recipient of the text writes, "That's not a quality career." Ms. Hankins responds, "It is for the black guy." This exchange is dated March twenty-first, twenty eighteen. When interviewed, Ms. Hankins did not recall this exact text message, but does recall that her brother spoke at career Davis year. In a group text that includes Ms. Hankins and five others, the group discusses a picture of an African-American man wearing a shirt that says, the first portion is unreadable, the letter P, white school, and then the tiger image on it that appears to be a Mexican mascot. The person who sent the picture writes, "How ironic, I could not resist this pick." Eric, Eric's dentist's office. Ms. Hankins writes, "LMAO." An unidentified person writes, "Imagine if they could learn to be white." Ms. Hankins responds with a lack of clear emoji. Ms. Hankins does not recall this text, where it is dated, she does know someone named Eric, who's a dentist, this occurred January nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Ms. Hankins texts it to an individual, "Change my mind, I want all three trees cut down in the health bay, and word out." This was followed by a gif of an African-American man. Ms. Hankins recalls her brother put a tree down for her, but does not specifically recall this message. This text was sent on June twenty-second, twenty nineteen. In a group text that includes Ms. Hankins and five other individuals, someone sends a gif that says, "Celebrate Black History." After two people respond, "No," and call this ass, someone asks if the original text writer is, quote, "Just trying to piss everyone off today, loljk." Another texter writes, "I think so, let's drag him behind a pickup truck while waving a competitor flag, just like we do to the people he loves." And, quote, another texter writes, quote, "LOL, you call them people, la, ha, ha, ha." End quote. Four other memes are exchanged, all of which mention race or Black History Month. Ms. Hankins responds with a meme that is difficult to see on the photocopy, but appears to be a woman sticking something dark and cylindrical into her mouth. Someone responds, "That must be a BD season." Ms. Hankins responds with another meme that is not clear enough to be on the photocopy. This exchange occurred on January fourteenth, twenty seventeen. Ms. Hankins does not recall participating in this exchange. In a group text message before sending this on September sixteenth, twenty eighteen, Ms. Hankins has a meme of a white woman with two toddlers with a caption, "I think this girl slept with Tiger Woods and JC." JC, Ms. Hankins does not recall sending this. In a group text on March eighth, twenty eighteen, between Ms. Hankins and two other people, Ms. Hankins writes, "Black guy just hit on me," and sends a meme of an African-American man that says, quote, "Me bro, please," end quote. Ms. Hankins does not recall sending this. In a group text, it's complaining about an individual who's previously a public official. There's a screenshot of a picture of the individual with his brother, who's a person with a disability. Someone writes, "It looks like his brother got all the brains in the family," below the screenshot. Ms. Hankins responds, "OMG, I just hate." She later writes, still laughing about, uh, "Looks like his brother got all the brains." The second text was dated July second, twenty nineteen. Ms. Hankins does not recall sending those messages, but does recall the earlier portion of the exchange about a Facebook post involving a tractor. The text messages have since surfaced on various social media platforms. The initial post about Ms. Hankins on page entitled Through My Eyes has four hundred and twenty-two comments and sustained shares as of March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Other memes on social media have emerged, created discussion about this topic. The district has received over thirty calls and approximately one hundred emails about this situation, some in support of Ms. Hankins and some that are very concerned about these texts. They have, they are have very likely had other social media discussions about this that I have not seen. The trade negotiation WDIB picked up the story, which also generated significant discussion throughout the community. The text messages have created significant disruptions to the district. I expect that disruption to be coming in twenty weeks and months. The situation is a broader trust about Ms. Hankins, who is a superintendent or a regular administrative position, who is a documental to Memphis Elementary School and the district, and would result in significant disruptions to all of the areas. The document presented to the board includes various other text messages, including discussions of unelected officials and having some personal activities. To be clear, my recommendation for non-renewal is based only on the text messages specifically mentioned above. It's my understanding that there are many questions about how these text messages were obtained. Many individuals in our district and the community have questioned motives of the person or persons who obtained them, currently have on them, and decided to release them now. Ms. Hankins reports that the messages originated from her brother's phone, which was reportedly stolen. Ms. Hankins reports that when the phone was returned, certain text messages had been repeated, apparently by the person who had the phone. I share significant concerns about the way in which these messages were obtained and used. I have balanced those concerns, the length of time that has passed, and the fact that they were reportedly sent, my personal experience working with Ms. Hankins, the good work Ms. Hankins has done for our district, and the work that Ms. Hankins has done for our district. I do not believe, however, that significant disruptions to our operations would cease if Ms. Hankins returns as Memphis Elementary School principal. For that reason, which I believe is neither arbitrary nor gracious, I am recommending for non-renewal. That is the non-renewal recommendation memorandum, and I will now agree a proposed resolution to the board's consideration. Whereas Susan Hankins is employed as an administrator with the Memphis Community Schools, pursuant to an employment contract which shall expire and terminate on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the superintendent has presented to the board with a written recommendation dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, that the board considered non-renewal of Ms. Hankins' contract as an administrator for the Memphis Community Schools. And the board has reviewed and considered the superintendent's written recommendation as well as the reasons for that recommendation. Now therefore, the result that the board determines that there is sufficient reason to consider the non-renewal of Ms. Hankins' contract as an administrator for the Memphis Community Schools. The board authorizes and directs the superintendent, promptly providing Ms. Hankins with written notice of this resolution, stating that the board is considering non-renewal of her administrative employment contract, together with a written statement of the reasons why the board is considering non-renewal. The superintendent is to the directive to notify Ms. Hankins that she shall be given the opportunity to meet with not less than a majority of the board to discuss the reasons stated in the written statement. This meeting shall be conducted in an open or closed session, as elected by Ms. Hankins. The superintendent is authorized to establish the date, time, and place of the board meeting to discuss the reasons set forth in the written statement. The reasons for considering the non-renewal of Ms. Hankins' contract shall be those reasons contained in the superintendent's memorandum to the board dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Those reasons incorporated by reference and adopted by the board are its own reasons for considering non-renewal of Ms. Hankins' contract. This resolution is enacted in Formance Section twelve twenty-nine, Bill of Rights School Code, MCL three eighty, point twelve twenty-nine. All resolutions and current resolutions that can look to this resolution are reasonable.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
It's moved by member Devos, supported by member Rosenau, to adopt the resolution as presented. Discussion? So, board, this is the first step. The administrator will have a chance to have a hearing before the board, before any non-renewal decisions made, that immediately should be, should be, the motion on the floor passed, that will be scheduled the earliest possible.
I would like to thank true for doing the transpiration, due process.
Discussion? All vote?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Devos?
Yes.
Six ayes, one negative, motion is carried. Let's take them on our agenda, Superintendent Thomas. Thank you. Board, it's been a difficult time, and I believe I shared with you guys that I was threatened in my house over the weekend, and I understand that some of them may have done. Rest assured that the person who did this will be discovered. There are furries working out and down, I have cameras everywhere. It's unconscionable that someone would do that. This is a dividing, you're out of order. A very difficult situation that we're in. However, I just wanted you, wanted you to know that I would be addressing this. Anyone else who's threatened that matter? Turn it over to the board. Anything else we can add? Take the last, do we have any need for another closed session? Let's give the last motion on the table, please.
I move to adjourn meeting at eight thirteen PM.
Board. It's moved by member Rosenau, supported by member Vossie, to reconvene the regular session at eight PM. Any other discussion?